Morris.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Faber.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Eight, I.
Yeah, okay, so, awesome. All right, Pledge of Legions, Shadow Gentry, would you come up and lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Mr. Gentry, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item C, approval of the agenda, I will take a motion to remove, to modify the agenda, removing Resolution 2022-049 from the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So it's moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Larson, roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight, I.
All right, so the modification of the agenda has been approved, now I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Faber, roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight, I.
All right, the agenda has been improved, it's like I've done this before, oh, yes, Alderwoman Morris.
I just thought we might want to discuss the need for that adjustment.
Can we still discuss that, I assume, a little out of procedural order, but, yeah, we just received modifications from the district's attorney that we haven't had a chance to review yet, so we just want a chance with our legal counsel and for counsel to be able to review. Sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, moving on to Agenda Item E, public participation, I have none, moving on to appointments, Agenda Item F, we have none, moving on to Agenda Item G, approval of the minutes, item number two, minutes submitted by the recording secretary, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting of May 9, 2022, and the minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 9, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Morris, roll call, please.
Before we do roll call, point of order real quick, can we, I had a question for the city clerk, but the city clerk is not here, going forward on meetings where the city clerk is not present, would it be possible to mention that in the minutes, please?
Absolutely, so, the city clerk was not present at the last meeting and is not present here, which is par for the course, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for calling that out.
No problem.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item H, the consent agenda.
Mayor.
Oh, wait, what happened?
I need to call the roll for the minute.
Oh, sorry, roll call.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight, I.
All right, the minutes have been accepted, you know I got cocky talking about I've done this before, and then the next item, bam.
Right.
All right, so now, moving on to the consent agenda, item H, I'll need a motion to approve accounts payable and payroll through May 23rd in the amount of $2,172,381.06, number two, investment and bank balance summary through March 2022, number three, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through March 2022, number four, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, April 2022, item five, DeKalb Chamber of Commerce 2021 annual report, item six, DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau 2021 annual report, item seven, DeKalb Municipal Ban 2021 annual report, and item eight, Resolution 2022-045, authorizing the execution of a workman's compensation lump sum petition and order in the amount of $58,185 for Jeffrey Guzinski, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faber, seconded by Alderman Verbic, any discussion on that? City manager, I have a top 10 non-police FOIA requesters by staff in front of me.
Yes.
That was just a, you want to talk a little bit about that?
It's an FYI, the council has a monthly report on the consent agenda tonight, which you just read the title for, but Scott Zach was kind enough to go back over the last year and identify the top 10 people who consistently are filing FOIA requests, and there are some representing commercial entities, but most are not, and I thought it would be useful to see, when we calculate staff costs, we just calculate a base wage, we don't, if these were billable hours, we'd include benefits and so forth, but I thought it would be useful information.
And for point of clarification, the hours spent, is that just Scott Zach, our FOIA officer, or what's included in that number?
And others, on occasion, the city attorney is involved, other staff are involved, and Scott Zach is usually the engine that pulls this all together, and certainly he does a lot of the work involved here, but other staff are involved on a regular basis.
So we've spent, and this is, you know, the last year, so $2,333 on the number one person, which we spent 47 hours on FOIA requests, which is 25% of the total staff cost of all FOIA requests, with the number two being the Daily Chronicle, Katie Finland, which is understandable, she's going to be making FOIA requests all the time for articles, so the number one, Mark Charvat, is 47 hours at $2,300, taking up 25% of staff costs for FOIA requests.
Correct.
Okay, any questions, yes, Alderwoman Larson.
And then just for clarity, I'm going to reach out to Scott, you have five days, if, once you get a FOIA request, you can't just be like, put it in my inbox and I'll get to it, when I get to it, you have a time limit, don't you, to do these?
Yeah, it depends, but generally speaking, it's, there's a five-day requirement that can be extended for an additional five business days, depending on certain factors, and then if the person was identified as a, as a repeat requister, which the law has a very high burden of what that means, then that could be additional time, a commercial request has a longer period of time, at least 21 days, I believe.
So, so basically, when we, when you get some, when it comes into the office, this is not something you can just.
You got to drop everything and.
And, right, so city business gets shuffled to the back, okay, just for clarity.
Because Scott, is your only role FOIA officer? Right. Yeah, well, I appreciate however this originated, just from the standpoint of, like I said, the Daily Chronicle reaching out for FOIA requests, totally makes sense, everyone else is, seems normal, but this one is definitely, I mean, 47 hours spent is a lot of hours spent on FOIA requests, totally believing FOIA, it's an important component, especially in the state of Illinois, I think we all could sit here and nod our heads that transparency is, is critical in our state, but this is, seems to be a little excessive, but obviously, like you said, the, the burden is high, right, city attorney, so, just is what it is, yeah, well, thanks for providing the information. All right, so, any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight, I.
All right, the consent agenda passes, moving on to public hearings, we have none tonight, so then we're on to considerations, item J, number one, consideration of the city's public transit fares, can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, council's aware, and some of our audience tonight may be aware that, like many other municipal transit systems, we suspended fares on all fixed route and paratransit services back in March of 2020, as the dreaded COVID pandemic was exploding across the country and across the world, at the same time, a lot of businesses were closed, and the fares were suspended through July of 2021, when the council took up the question of whether they could be reinstituted, or maybe should remain suspended, at that time, the council thought it was prudent to wait and continue the moratorium until the end of the fiscal year of 2021, and so another postponement was made, here we are, we've been tracking usage, the system is open again, buses are kept clean every day, and we are operating, aiming to operate at least as, as fully as we were back in 2019 prior to the moratorium, and I think we'll probably hit that, that mark by the end, Mike Newenkerson, our transit managers in the audience tonight, and the head nod is sufficient for me, so, pretty good guess and may exceed where we were before the, the COVID moratorium was imposed, our, our system does not rely on, on rider payments to maintain operations, in fact, it's a very small fraction of the overall operating cost, but it does generate in the course of a year, as it did in 2019, possibly, say, $60,000 in fare revenue, this year, if we were to reinstitute fares at the low rate they were at in 2019, we'd get about half of that for the balance of the year, and that sometimes is useful, it's, on occasion, provided a, a spare vehicle for, for all the trips that transit manager makes on a daily basis, tracking vehicles and so forth, and, and other things, sometimes it's signage, sometimes it's marketing, that type of thing, just so everybody knows, and I highlighted this in the background, our fixed route bus fare is one of the lowest in the states, general public passengers have to pay 50 cents, senior citizens, individuals with disabilities, K to 12 students pay a reduced fare of 25 cents, NIU students and children under the age of five ride free, NIU students don't quite ride free, they pay student fees, one of those fees buried in that, that price that they pay has to do with the transit system access, and so, they don't have to pay when they get on, but they're paying in some other fashion, but for people who are not students at Northern, then there is a very modest payment, it's either 25 cents or 50 cents for a ride, and that's for that full ride, you don't have to get off and pay a transfer and so forth, so, here's where we are, we have discussed this internally at the staff level for some months, we wanted to bring this back to you, we weren't in a hurry, as you could see, we could have brought it back in January, February, and, but we feel at this point, it's, it's appropriate now that the, the school year, Northern school year is over, we can, with your support, reinstitute the 2019 fare system, so no increases over the last three years, but we would be in a position to have things in place on the buses and elsewhere to pay for fares and be ready for the fall, the return of students in the fall, that's our recommendation, sir.
Alderman Perkins.
What if we wanted to do two things, and one thing would be to reinstitute, reinstitute the fares, and then move the fares to a more normalized rate with what the rest of the state is doing, for their rates, for example, what if we wanted to take it from the, the adult fare from 50 cents to a buck, and the paratransit from a buck to two bucks?
The champagne urbane.
Yeah, kind of just in the middle of what the rest of the folks are doing.
I'll ask Mike to comment on what he, what he thinks that might do, the ridership, if it would have any impact, I, I think at this point, we're, we're open to any suggestions you have, we aimed low, the gentlest way to get back in, but Mike, do you have a, yeah, please.
Yeah, please do, buddy, Mike. I don't know if we've seen you at a city council meeting yet, but welcome aboard, it's great to have you.
Thank you, thank you very much, yeah, thank you, members of the council, and it's, Mayor Barnes, it's good to see you, and, you know, I've dealt with him in the past in other situations, you know, outside of there, so it's good to see you again, you know, I, the impacts on ridership right now at this point in time, it would be hard to say what that, like, say, increase from 50 cents to a dollar would be, I couldn't say that right off the top of my head, what I can tell you is that we would be required under FTA regulations to enter some sort of consideration period, a public hearing, some sort of public comment period, to study those impacts, you know, and that, that falls under Title VI, which is the Civil Rights Act, so that would be that area where we could study and capture that, and that would be a requirement for any sort of fare increase, whether we decide to do it or not.
Mm-hmm, and because, because my concern, I think, is same as what many others are, I understand that a lot of the costs of this are borne by other areas, but at, on some level, if we have additional revenue, then we're a little, little better prepared to deal with inflationary pressures, the fuel pressures that we're all going to be seeing.
Yep.
Right now.
If I may just follow, I agree 100%, my thought was, if we could reinstitute something just to get people in the habit of paying a little and so forth, and, and it'll be just a few short months before we might want to reconsider the overall fare system in relation to other parts of the state, then we could more thoughtfully go through that hearing and open house process in the fall before the holidays, and be ready, if the council's so inclined, to, to change that base system.
That was my thought, reading through the backup, too, is that if we really wanted to do something for an increase, it's a two-part thing, I would think, number one is reinstituting where we are, and then the second piece is starting the process for whatever we would want it to be eventually.
Alderwoman Morris.
Just to clarify the relevance of this, of the fares, what percentage of the entire cost of the bus system are fares, or have fares been in the past?
It is, you know, as, as, you know, the city manager said, it is a very small amount, you know, on a.
So are we talking 5% or 1%?
On an $8 million system, when you're looking at potentially $100,000 in fares, you know, you can kind of, you know, break down the math from there, but, the one thing I will say is that local income is an important element to the long-term health of the system, I'm not, you know, attempting to say one way or the other, whether, you know, that we need to increase, or, or anything along those lines, I'm just saying that having a local income element is important for the system, for a number of reasons, you know, it's additional income that can be used for project revenue and other areas, it's unencumbered by, say, you know, when you're doing your grant drawdowns, you can maybe set, set aside those funds for local purchases.
Sure.
There are certain elements like that, and then just kind of long-term, what the, just addressing the long-term growth of the system.
Right.
Less than 1%.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, so the city manager's looking for head nods on, is this the direction we want to go with, the recommendation to raise the fixed route adult fare to 50 cents and the paratransit fare to a dollar? I'm seeing heads nodding, city manager.
Thank you, Mike, does the FTA require an action item, or is this, is this sufficient?
We are not raising fares so much as we're just re-implementing something that was.
Yeah, they were suspended, so we're just lifting the suspension.
Exactly, yeah.
So we don't need a.
I, we don't need a hearing to, because it's, there's no raise.
Thank you.
Okay.
We will proceed.
Awesome, sounds good.
Thank you very much for your time and pleasure bringing you on board.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to number two, consideration of refunding general obligation bonds, Series 2013A, DeKalb Public Library Bonds, can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Faber, city manager.
Thank you, I told Kerry Edmond to be prepared to jump in if my voice alters tonight. Kerry, no. From time to time, we, we have an opportunity with our general obligation debt to do some refunding, which is to position ourselves to hopefully pay either less interest over time, or to gain savings that can be amortized over, say, the balance of the particular debt, and in the background, which Kerry was, was very helpful in helping to create, the city's five outstanding bond issues are portrayed for you, there are two that are highlighted, the other ones are not going to be eligible for refunding, one of them, which was the 2012A, the police station bonds are eligible to refund, be refunded, but they carry interest rates that are not going to give us cost savings in the, the remaining balance of the years owing here, but there is one series, and that is the 2013A bonds, they were used to finance the expansion and renovation of DeKalb Public Library, you're very familiar with this bond, we pay about half a million dollars a year in debt service to help ultimately redeem the bonds, we have been advised by the, the very careful assistance of Delana Welkimer, who's in the audience, sitting very quietly and next to the last row, Baird Public Finance, whom we've worked with on other occasions, and more recently, on a 2020 bond, which helped us lift and, and reap, what did we do, we lifted and scooped? Whatever we did, but it saved us about $1.8 billion in debt service in 2020, when we, 21, when we needed it most, so, with her, a very deft hand, and with Kerry's experience, we've come to a proposal for you, which is to indeed consider refunding that library bond, there are different ways to do it, which have been outlined in the background, I won't detail them so much as to say that, given the nature of the bonds and interest rates now, Baird is advising us that our greatest opportunity may lie with what's called a private placement, which is to say, a direct placement with a bank, this is what we did in 2019 with another refunding bond, as some of you may remember, so, private placement typically has lower issuance rates, or costs, excuse me, and can be done more quickly, if you had to go for the full bond rating, official statement, and so forth, and then also inviting a rating agency to come in, not the best time to, to have yet another run through our, our credit worthiness at this point, even though we're doing everything we can, remember, we were doing everything we could the last time, got docked a little bit, so, what we're looking at is a four-month, that would be option two in your background on page six or five, let's say, excuse me, a four-month forward delivery, so, by that we lock in a tax exempt rate in June, the delivery occurs in October, and that way we eliminate some market risk, it speeds us to, to the point where we get into the market, we settle, particularly with what the Fed is, we're hearing what the Fed is planning to do in June, and maybe into the, the next round beyond that, time is of the essence, so, overall, if we pursue that option, we would save about $190,000, it's not, it'd be nice if it was 1.9 million, but still, that is a savings, I, I think at the staff level, we were loath to walk away from it, it comes on an annual basis to just a little over 17,000, but it certainly helps us in the short term, and we won't get another opportunity with this bond, so we recommend your support for option number two, as explained in the background.
Council, questions? All right, hearing none, we're head nodding, that go forth and do, city manager? All right?
Okay.
Yep.
Our, we'll be bringing this back to you on June 13th in ordinance form, that will get the, the clock ticking.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item K, resolutions, the next item is revolving around the Tiff District, so as usual, since I own property in the Tiff, I will step down and have just Alderman Faber run that part of the agenda.
Item K, resolutions, number one, Resolution 2022-046, authorizing an architectural improvement program, economic incentive for the Aurora Music Company Incorporated, 137 East Lincoln Highway, in the amount of $25,000, can I get a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
Thank you, in, in my mind, this particular project is what the AIP program was designed to help, there's already been a significant investment by Mr. Mondi, who's the owner of the Aurora Music Company, who's in the audience tonight, in renovating the former commercial building and space at 137, sorry, 137 East Lincoln Highway, and he, he's done a lot, a lot of things interior-wise in, in your background, the people in the audience, if they've taken a few minutes, could see in the background photographs, and there are a lot of them, a lot, a lot of work has happened, a lot of old spaces downtown, good bones, but they need to be upgraded, and, and the focus of this particular AIP assistance is on ADA compliance, and that was at the core of the AIP program beginning, Mr. Mondi and associates have, have been working on the first floor bathroom, and also in the lower-level bathroom, and the combination of, of this work and, and some other minor work that also qualifies under the AIP program, would just come up to the 25,000 limit, and Mr. Mondi's already invested in about 75,000, so, this, this is a helpful incentive, but he was intending to open and do it right, this, this just helps with some of the things that you, you could do it halfway, but if, if you don't do it right, then somebody later on is going to say, wait a minute, this, this is a new venture, and these bathrooms aren't, aren't up to code, so, we are pleased to support him, there is, in, in your background, there's a $25,000 forgivable loan proposal, and that will about exhaust the AIP program for this year, even though we've had just two smaller payouts for projects that you discussed back in December, there was a carryover of a, of a full $25,000 grant that wasn't expended in '21 into '22, and so, with this 25,000, it'll put us pretty close, so, what you will see here shortly, as we get into the FY22 budget amendments, we're, we're going to make amends and provide a little slack so we can truly get in at roughly 70,000 that we intend to spend every year in this, so, but first things first, we recommend this, this forgivable loan to you.
Any comments, council?
Well, I just want to say, thank you for choosing DeKalb, I love what you've done inside those pictures, I'm like, that's exactly what we're looking for in downtown DeKalb, fresh, creative, with character, just thank you for choosing us.
Thank you.
Lot of work.
Well, it looks fabulous.
I'll echo the same thing, and I, and I would encourage anyone out there to take a look at some of the pictures that they've done, because it's, it really tells a story, you know, and I think it's, it's a great story, welcome, best of luck. All right, roll call?
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Seven, I.
Motion passes, welcome downtown, thank you very much for your investment.
All right, in no way, shape, or form, do you have to stay for the rest of the meeting, we would not take offense if you left, but you're more than welcome to, but no problem whatsoever if you want to go about your night, all right.
Thank you.
Moving on to Resolution 2022-047, authorizing a concurrence letter as requested by the Illinois Department of Transportation, concurring with a bid award and authorizing local funding of a bid overrun, Peace Road and Fairview Drive, can I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith, city manager. Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And this override will be also addressed later on in the FY22 budget revisions. But it's substantial. It's connected with a larger project. We've got a number of partners. We have a city share, which is originally slated to be 500,000, and now it's over a million dollars. The State of Illinois has 1.5 million in. Local developer has another million in, and the County of DeKalb has money in as well. And, you know, there'll be other contributions as this first phase grows into multiple phases going north from the interchange. But if we don't support this concurrence letter, then all the other parties fall out, and we can't proceed. This is very critical at this point in redevelopment or in the industrial development of that area now, basically from the center line of 88 going north. And we, we're not wild about this surprise. We are happy that we have tended to maintain good balances, thanks to Counsel's prudence and our principal capital funds, and we have the money to support this in our motor fuel tax fund, Fund 210. So we urge your support.
Counsel? Looking forward to the project. All right, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8-i?
All right, resolution 2022-047 passes. Moving on to number three, resolution 2022-048, authorizing a payment to the DeKalb County Community Foundation on behalf of the DeKalb Municipal Band for services, beginning January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022, in the amount of $41,088. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins, City Manager.
Thank you. I just can't get the music man out of my mind. Copper bottom, timpanis, and big bassoons. In any case, over the years, we have supported our municipal band. It was founded in 1854. It's performed over a longer consecutive period, as we understand, than any other band in the State of Illinois. And last year, in order to deal with the fact that the band could not get a 501.3 standing because they were considered part of the city, we worked out with the help of the DeKalb County Community Foundation, a pass-through fund that would give that band a tax-free status so others could give to it. But our money just basically goes in and goes out. It's, the money proposed here is what was budgeted in the FY22 budget, more or less, $41,088. And we recommend authorizing this payment to the community foundation so that the band will be able to pay their musicians.
So moved.
Counsel? All right, hearing no questions. Roll call, please.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8-i?
All right, resolution 2022-048 passes. All right, then moving on to, we're skipping number four and moving on to resolution 2022-050, authorizing a change order to expand the scope of work provided by Northern Illinois Services Company in relation to the demolition and restoration of 1011 through 1027 West Hillcrest Drive in the amount of $49,824. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Faber, City Manager.
Well, we didn't obviously do extensive soil borings throughout the paved area of the parking lot. We were familiar with the subgrade around our light standards and other things, and didn't see a trace of the concrete. But what we discovered last Thursday, what Andy Brey discovered after being contacted by our contractor, was that in addition to the inches of asphalt and other aggregate at the surface, there was another approximately five to six inches of concrete throughout the whole parking area. So we could hardly have taken away the asphalt, and then for some prospective buyer later on say, how do you like concrete? And we've got the company that specializes in removing and grinding and reusing, repurposing these kinds of road materials. So we feel they gave us a very fair price. They had us over a barrel, they didn't take advantage of it. They will do everything they can to work with us in other ways. But, and they weren't feeling great about this either, but we're happy that we're working with the company. We are, as you know, we worked with them in the demolition of the old city hall on South Forest Street, and we've seen them around here in other projects, very, very reputable, very professional. So the additional work with the $49,824 would come, overall, for this Northern Illinois Services contract to $287,707. How does that compare with, you know, other bidders? Are we hurting ourselves here? Well, the lowest bidder, not counting the extra 49, almost 50,000, was 300,000. Small comfort, but we do know, in the universe of bidders that were interested in this project, we got a very good price to begin with. We still have a good total, a solid total going forward, and we recommend that you approve this change order.
Counsel? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8-i?
Resolution 2022-050 passes. This is the project that just keeps on giving.
Keeps giving.
All right, moving on to agenda item L, ordinance's second reading. We have none. So agenda item M, ordinance's first reading. Number one, ordinance 2022-022, approving the final development plan and final plat for Arista residences located at 1383 Barbara Green Road. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Faber, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in late January, the council approved the ordinance that approved the annexation, rezoning, and preliminary plan for the construction of Arista residences, and that consisted of a residential building with 61 one-bedroom dwelling units located on the site of what about a one-point acre site once was occupied by Burris Landscaping and Lawn Care. The ordinance that was passed in January required a final look at the final development plan and final plat when they were ready, prior to any building permits being issued. So that's what we're bringing back to you. We've been to the Plan Commission with this. The development, planning has changed more in the, I would say, in the direction of some of the questions that were raised by the council back in January. Is there a way to maybe make the appearance of the building a little softer, colors, a little different masonry be added? And that has been added. In addition, it remains 61 one-bedroom apartment building. The only significant change is, there were three points of access that were proposed on the original plat. So there's a full access on County Farm Road, I'm sorry, and then there's that right-in, right-out on Barbara Green Road. And then there was kind of a throw-in, at the time, the ownership of the private lane that is to the north thought it would be okay to, maybe studied it that much, it'd be okay to have just kind of a reliever, like a driveway onto their street. But they gave it some second thought and contacted Pappas Development, thought that it'd be better if they didn't do that. They were worried about, of course, maintenance and so forth. So it remains a development with two very viable entrances and exits, and we need that for emergency services and also for the smooth travel of customers in and out of that, and residents in and out of that complex. So the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed it at their last meeting on May 16th and unanimously recommended that the council provide its approval. We support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
Counsel? Questions, comments? Alderman Morris, yes?
I remember last time, we sort of talked about the parking and if we wanted to change our parking ordinance at all, which I realize is, we have to do that before, but, because, you know, we've got one-bedroom apartments for people who are transient workers, and we've got 92 parking spaces, which just feels like overkill.
And one cannot predict the future occupancy, and there are many that are probably working in one of our larger projects. But that is not, we're told, the exclusive clientele, shall we say. We have a comp plan in the process, and we are talking about that. It's one of the recommended actions as we go forward. In this case, the developer is content with it. They have some experience with this model, this approach, and on the one hand, nobody likes to pay any more than the next guy or the next person on asphalt costs, and greenery is good. By the way, there's some additional greenery because that northern lane is out, so they're able to extend the plantings around the north side entirely. So all in all, Pappas Development is content with where they are. They're willing to pay, so.
Okay, thank you.
We support it.
Any other questions?
The revised elevation looks very nice, you know, compared to the, I guess, the previous. You put the two next to each other, this one, very attractive. Glad that was a reconsideration.
Anything else? All right, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8-i?
Ordinance 2022-022 passes on first reading.
Motion to waive second reading and approve, second?
Motion to waive second reading by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8-i?
Ordinance 2022-022 has, second reading has been waived. All right, moving on to number two, ordinance 2022-023, amending the fiscal year-end, December 31st, 2022 budget. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Faber, seconded by Alderman Perkins, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. You might be asking, didn't we just go through this while we went through it for FY21? We're doing it for FY22 now. FY21 had more attention to the general fund. This has more attention to capital funds than non-general fund expenditures. The details are itemized in your background, and were prepared by Kerry Dittman, and at this point, in the interest of saving what's left of the vocal cords, I'm happy to yield any questions to Kerry. We've touched tonight on two of the larger numbers, the 500,000 for the downtown and the 500,000-plus for the Peace Road bump up, and then there was another bump. We were originally going to take money out of the general fund reserve, put it in the capital equipment fund for the purchase of the first fire engine. It's only a couple months away. We instead were proposing to put that into the GM-T fund, which will continue to provide most now going forward, as the revenue has been solidified, more of a regular support for fire vehicles and larger expenditures. And there was one piece that we were wrestling with, and it was a carryover from last year, and that was those cots, those, what do we call those, Mike?
Striker, power load systems.
Power load systems. So right now, we have great manual lift, and they're saving on back strains, but this is actually the motorized, and they are starting, going to be arriving very soon. So another 300 and some thousand advance pays those, which now's the time to do that while the price is right. So Kerry, any other thoughts you'd like to?
Would you mind coming to the podium, Finance Director Dittman? Thanks.
Thank you, good evening. I'm happy to give Bill a reprieve to save his voice. Just a couple additional items that Bill mentioned. One and two basically are some of the larger capital, ongoing construction projects that the city is continuing with. One item, the $500,000 was covered in a previous agenda item for that overrun on Peace Road and Fairview Drive. There's also a large item of about $550,000 related to the Lincoln Highway reconfiguration project. If you recall, the city received one bid for that project, and the bid exceeded the budget and the engineer's estimates, so $550,000 is being added in Tiff III to cover that expense. Fortunately, in both the MFT and Tiff III funds, there's adequate reserves to cover both of those increased costs. As Bill noted, item three and four just relates to capital equipment purchases. The money that was going to be transferred to the capital equipment replacement fund for the fire truck is now going into the GM-T fund, and at a reduced price, along with the increased expenditures for those motorized costs, that's a net increase to that fund of about $129,000. The other large item relates to, in the capital projects fund, a continuation of several road projects. For architect and engineering services, we're adding $236,000. That relates to the Fairview Road bike path that's ongoing, the Route 23 and Gorilla Road construction, and part of the Lincoln Highway reconfiguration engineering side. And then within street improvements, we're adding just under 1.9 million for the continuation of Afton Road, Dresser Road, and the Gorilla Road, Route 23 projects, additionally for some work in the Knoll subdivision. However, with offsetting revenue that we're going to receive from Farrara of about $573,000, and offsetting State of Illinois grant funds of roughly 1.6 million, the total increase of expenditures to that fund is only about 50,000. We're also doing some cleanup of getting rid of the sales of surplus property revenue line item that we don't expect is going to occur, so we've been taking that out. We're only at a net of about 50,000 plus. Most of the remaining items have no net effect within the funds. Six, seven, and eight are all just reclassifying within line items and have no net effect to those funds. Those are basically a result of audit standards and auditor recommendations. Item nine is just a housekeeping item to add a couple thousand dollars for police vehicle costs for a, some older, excuse me, community support services vehicles that were not put in the budget this year. Item 10, we've discussed a little bit, the, in the Tiff fund, we're getting close to hitting that AIP budget amount of about $70,000, and we've got additional projects that we may be bringing forward to the council at a later date. So we have a $47,000 increase to both expenditure and revenue, because our actual property tax extension, in actuality, is about 47,000 higher than what we had budgeted, so that's an offset, no net effect to that fund. Similarly, with the $50,000 grant we received from T-Mobile, we'll have $50,000 of grant revenue, which is going to be offset by 50,000 in contracted services to expend that program for public art. And then lastly, or excuse me, item 12, again, no net effect in this fund. This was a reclassification between, instead of buying a leaf vacuum, the money is being allocated towards a second public works truck, so there's no net effect with that one. And then lastly, in item 13, within the capital equipment replacement fund, the police department was able to take advantage of purchasing a used squad from another police was able to take advantage of purchasing a used squad from another police department, as well as purchasing a new 2021 squad, which was approved earlier this year at a city council meeting. So the purchase price for those two items with up bidding necessitates an increase of $51,000 to that capital equipment fund. And that's all that we have at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for our Finance Director or City Manager? Very detailed, as always, which is fantastic. Thank you. Appreciate the work. All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Ad I?
Ordinance 2022-023 passes on first reading.
Motion to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
I have a motion to waive second reading by Alderman Verbic and seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Questions or comments on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Ad I?
All right, so Ordinance 2022-023, second reading has been waived. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item N, Reports and Communications, Councilmember reports. Who would like to kick it off? Alderman Favor?
So tomorrow night is the Airport Advisory Board Meeting. It's at the airport at 7:00 in the main hangar. Everyone's welcome. And speaking of the airport, there is a EAA, which stands for Experimental Aircraft Association. They're having an event on Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00. So if you have a child who's never experienced an airplane ride and would love to go for an airplane ride, head out to the airport on June 4th from 9:00 to 11:00. And then come back on Sunday morning for the EAA fundraising pancake breakfast. They raise money for scholarships to help students pay for airtime to get their pilot's license. So that breakfast, it's a pancake, sausage, eggs. It'll be served for, I think it's, I think it's 8:00 to noon, but it's on June 5th.
Can we find all that online somewhere?
They are. It is online. It's on Facebook. If you look at the local EAA chapter, it's EAA 241. And so you could probably do a search on, there will be a Young Eagles page, there will also be an EAA page as well for EAA 241. It may or may not be on the community calendar. I'm trying to think where else you'd see it. It was also sent out to us as, in our mail, as alderpersons.
Alderman McAdams?
Sure. If everyone would indulge me, I would like to congratulate Associate Judge John McAdams, who happens to be my first cousin, who was recently appointed to the Illinois Supreme Court in the 23rd District, 23rd Judicial Circuit. And I just wanted to say that we're all very proud of him as he has made his way through the judicial system. John and I, we grew up in the south side of Chicago. John would take me around and really show me how the life on the streets was. He grew up in Riverdale, which was a very rough neighborhood. And so when we would go over there for family visits, John would take me out, and we would, I would learn how the world really worked. And so I'm very proud of him, and I just wanted to say that.
Awesome.
13th Street is making progress. Thanks again, Zach. I drive down it every day. It's getting a little smoother as we go through, but the residents are extremely happy with what's going on, and I think 14th Street will be just as happy as we make our way up on that. So again, thank you.
Alderwoman Morris?
I'm going to hold a first ward meeting on June 28 at 6:30 PM. Location to be determined.
Awesome. Alderwoman Larson?
A great couple of weeks. We have a new police officer sworn in and a new fireman sworn in, so that was exciting. And the people from the streets and master gardeners and all different gardening groups have the downtown planters all planted, and they look really lovely, so.
They do.
Yeah. So that's it.
Alderman Perkins?
Just a reminder, I'm having a ward meeting on Wednesday at the shelter, DeKalb Shelter on Fairview, and encourage anyone to come out and talk about any concerns. We have an award, and would also like to encourage everyone to take part in some type of Memorial Day festivity. You know, there's a lot of things going on this weekend.
Absolutely. Alderman Verbic?
No report.
Mine will be brief. I went to Lanark, Illinois this week for the Northern Illinois Mayors Association meeting, which was just great to get to interact with a bunch of other mayors and share best practices. And we had a guest speaker, which was an SRO for their school district, just talking about his role, responsibility, and the impact SROs make. And it was a beautiful, beautiful drive. I haven't drove Northern Illinois west in a long time. Man, that was just so scenic.
That is way out there.
It is. I know, it's out there. Exactly. So also participated in the swearing-in of two police officers and a firefighter, which was phenomenal, and also city staff. So all the alderpeople get invited to the fire swearing-ins, but not everyone's getting invited to the police. And I know there's a bunch of alderpeople here that would love to be part of those. So however that works, it'd be great to get the entire council added.
As these arise, and we learn from the two departments, and Ruth should be informed, and she'll get the notice.
Yeah, awesome. That's great. Yeah, because it is great to see all of you that come out to events when we're notified of it. So the support is definitely there. Also met with District 428 staff, with City Manager Nicholas and Police Chief Byrd, discussing the SRO issue, which was a good meeting. Opportunity DeKalb, we had a meeting with them, just discussing the Hunter Hillcrest location and future possibilities within Antiglen North. Met with a developer with an interesting prospect. That'll be interesting to see if that comes to fruition. Welsh Park had a ribbon cutting, too, which was really cool. Some of you were there. Great turnout, huge turnout. I can't remember how many burritos and tacos that the Burrito Ville food trucks sold, but oh my gosh, they made a killing. So it was really great to see the residents out, and it was wonderful just hanging out with them at a picnic table and chewing the fat and finding out what's going on in their world and what their questions were. And it was just an overall wonderful, wonderful event. And I think Opportunity DeKalb helped put that on. And then also, Bill and I met with the leadership of NIU, which we have a regular standing meeting, just to talk about where they're going, what we're doing, and keep everyone aligned. So busy couple weeks, but all very, very good, and just shows the continued progress that we have here in the city of DeKalb. City Manager, do you have a report?
I don't.
All right. Oh.
You might have mentioned Memorial Day Parade.
Yes, so we have the, do you have the details? I can't remember when it starts. You're calling me out. Oh, here we go. Scott, or get down.
Yes, after two years' absence, the Memorial Day Parade will return at 9:00. It will, staging begins at 8:30 at North 3rd Street in Locust, but west on Locust this year because of Lincoln Highway reconfiguration across 1st Street. And then it will go north on Linden Place and then behind the Elwood House, where our Memorial Day program will be at 9:30. So 9:00 parade, 9:30 program.
Awesome. That's great.
There's also the Mayor's Breakfast. It starts at the Elks Club at 6:45 on Memorial Day, and goes till about 4:00 or so. And I hear, I know the food is good. I know the cook, one of the cooks.
Yeah. That's a fun event. Yeah, it'll start on time and end on time.
Yeah.
Start early.
All right, awesome. Moving on to Agenda Item O then, Executive Session. So I would take a motion to move us into executive session for approval to hold an executive session in order to discuss the sale or lease of real property as provided for in 5 ILCS 122 C6 and pending litigation as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2 C11. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith. Is it roll call? Roll call.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Ad I?
All right, we are moved to executive session. Favorite phrase during my college years I heard often was, "You all don't have to go home, but you can't stay here." Have a good night, everybody.